Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protam Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
That concludes roll of call.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comments? Len Friend? Are you, you wanted to make a public comment? Okay, over at the podium there, and you have five minutes. And it's just a comment, so it won't be a back-and-forth question-answer.
If I can't answer the question, what do I do?
You can make-
If I don't have enough to say, I should ask you a question? Can you tell me they can't answer my questions? I hope.
Go ahead.
If they don't want to answer, they can't. I know who they are. So, my question has to do with this fire thing. I'm trying to be an informed voter, and I look at two different sorts of information on council agendas and such, and it tells me that there, we're going to get money back, million six or million seven or something, but then every citizen in Mount Lake Terrace is going to pay another $400 a year per household. So, I'm confused, and so are other people I've talked to about it, and it's not very well explained in the happenings. It tells me I'm going to spend more money, and in the agendas, it says we're getting money back. So, maybe you guys could explain that to me, and if the cost of fire is going up, maybe you could explain to me why. Same people that are doing the same service, it's just not a contract now we're being annexed. I don't know if the words mean that much different, but maybe you could explain it to me, and maybe other people understand it, too. That's all I got. So, can council answer that, or?
You guys voted 7-0 for it, so you must have looked about.
We can probably do that. We can probably answer under new business. We can probably answer under new business.
You can have a speaker.
We can probably answer under new business.
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to make a comment, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. All right, next is consent calendar. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through D.
Second.
This has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is, and we've been waiting for this for a long time, is introduction of our new city manager, Jeff Knighton. And who is going to be introducing him?
Yep. Yeah.
It says introduction of.
That was close. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council members for the record, Stephen Clifton, Assistant City Manager. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Jeff Knighton, N-I-T-E-N. And Mr. Knighton comes to us from the city of Sheldon, Washington, and he was selected by the city council on a 7-0 vote following interview process, which took place last month. So, at this time, we can probably have Jeff say a few words to you, and you can certainly ask him any questions as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I am very happy to be here. I've had kind of a whirlwind first day, a lot of things going on, a lot of things going on this week, but very happy to be here and excited to be part of the process of moving Mount Lake Terrace forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Does anyone want to say anything before we move on to the next item? As in, welcome. Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
Be more than happy to. Well, first off, thank you very much for taking the position. I have to kind of giggle because you look like a cross between two of our former city managers, so-
Both great, right?
And that's a compliment. I was looking over at Brian, I wanted to say, hey, Brian, doesn't he remind you of somebody? But I love the sheer smile on your face and the excitement of being here because, as you know, we're going to be losing Stefan, which is going to be a big blow to our city.
Yep.
And so, having you onboard, bringing us up to speed, bringing you up to speed, and there is a host of exciting things going on in Mount Lake Terrace, but also, the mayor and I were just talking about some things that we'd really like to get see started. And I, every time Brian talks, I want to write down his list for him, because I'm always looking at him, I'm like, okay. So, I think when you have your one-on-one meetings with all of us, you're going to see how excited we are for the city and how much passion we have for that, and we, we hope that we can bring you up, and you can bring us up, and get us to where we need to be, and take good care of our citizens. But overall, just thank you for being here. It's, it's very nice to have you here, and we really much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will said. Not much more to add. We are all very excited to have you onboard and looking forward to continue to make a lot of headway and progress on all the exciting goals we have in mind and the vision we have for the city. So, thank you for coming onboard, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I think I was counting the days, maybe the hours. All right, so next on the agenda is a city manager's report. Do we have a city manager's report? Okay.
So, I talked with Stefan a little bit today about that, and a lot of things were mentioned last Thursday, and not really too many updates to that from your study session. But I did want to mention that I'm looking forward to scheduling one-on-one meetings with each of you over the next several weeks, and then checking in with you about expectations moving forward, making sure we hit all those marks. Have been meeting with department directors today. We'll continue to do that throughout the week, and looking forward to meeting with you and starting to get, getting to work on scheduling your retreat, because I know that's something that's very important to all of you, and a little bit late in the year, but we want to get started as soon as we can. So, that's all I have at the moment. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions to ask? We just want to make sure that you're not, you know, we don't want to push too many things on you at once.
Thankfully, for the last several months, I've been doing a lot of research, so I know kind of the things that are moving forward, but there's no substitute for being here. So, kind of informing, filling in the lines for, from what I've discovered so far.
Thank you. Okay, so next is council liaison reports. I'm going to start with councilmember, councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go further back because I was not at our last Monday meeting. Some of this feels like I said this already, so I apologize if I forecasted what I was going to do in the previous meeting to that. That said, let's go. Tuesday, the 21st, Lake Ballinger, McIlure Creek, we had our watershed forum meeting, and I will just say, it continues to be a great group, and there are changes potentially on the way in redesigning how that group is meeting, meaning that on the table right now is not renewing the inter-local agreement, because that will open up capacities in ways that we have been bound by, which includes potentially having Linwood join us and potentially having the county itself join us. So, we'll keep you informed on that. Really, it's led by the staff. They're the ones doing the bulk of the work, and so we're doing our best to make sure that we are making it conducive to their workday, if you will. It just will free them up. They already meet locally anyway, and it will allow us to focus on other parts of the watershed. So, not abandoning the relationship at all, looking to strengthen it, but might seem ironic that you're going to not renew an agreement, but that agreement was too restrictive. Moving forward, that same day, I participated in the 32nd Legislative District's virtual town hall. If you recall, all of the LDs were doing town halls across the state, and so 32nd happened to be on that Tuesday. On the 23rd, a couple of days later, that Thursday, had the honor of being on a panel and talking with Harbor Point Middle School at the Students of Color Career Conference, which was just an amazing, always opportunity to be a part of that experience. I encourage you all when it happens again next year, which it should, not for MICA, that there's always room to have folks just talk with young people, and it's a great opportunity. Moving forward, I was on the 24th at the ribbon cutting for Hadiana. Is that how you say that, Hadiani?
Hadiani.
Hadiani Restaurant. I apologize if we're getting your name wrong there, but wonderful food, even if I can't say your name. Saturday, the 25th, I represented us at the NAACP Snohomish Counties Gala, and that's going to be another example of, I'd love to have more of us attend in the future, and I'll be more diligent in raising that as an opportunity in the future. Moving forward, in the next week, the 28th, that Tuesday, that morning, participated in the Economic Alliance Snohomish Counties Coffee Chats. This one was Women in Business. They have the recordings. If you can't make it, go to their website, and they pretty much have all of them probably just listed by date, and they're usually Tuesdays, and so they're posting usually by Wednesday. That same day, that afternoon, I was invited by Washington State University Everett to talk with their student body during their career week. So, that was fun to go from middle schoolers all the way back up to college, which is the group I'm a little bit more used to talking with. It was a great conversation about diversity in the workplace and just the importance of community engagement. The 29th, I had what's called Access, and I think the mayor was a part of that as well, so she talked about that. I won't go too far into it, but just know that we are recognizing the uptick, is what I'm going to say, what it feels like an uptick in gun violence. I think you all have heard, a young man was gunned down in basically Broadway, Seattle, with a nine-year-old, his nephew in the car, who was also injured, and he gave his life protecting, protecting his nephew. I won't go too much deeper into that, but just know that Access has seen this and is trying to bring a very diverse, in terms of population, in terms of fields, together to figure out what we can do, because we need to be able to figure out something. We can't keep doing nothing. And I'm sure others are doing works. I don't mean to denigrate the work you're doing, but clearly, it's not working. On the 30th, I was with us for the study session, and then there was a whole week of silence, and it was lovely. And then I came back on the 11th, and that was the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County again doing another coffee chat. This was the regional transportation priorities, very interesting. So, if you don't watch any of the other ones, you might want to watch that one, because again, that's impacting the region, and this one was about things like light rail. And then wrapping that day up, I had a chance to join quite a few folks in the county at the Snohomish County State of the County with our county executive giving that talk, and we are a very healthy county, I'm happy to report. And then on the 12th, a little foreshadow to your question, coffee with the city. This one was focused on those very types of questions, what's going on with this Proposition 1. So, I thought that was very well attended, great questions, and kudos to the city for answering questions as most reasonably as they can. And then the 13th, we were together again for the study session, and then just this Saturday, which posted today, I was at the ribbon cutting for BW noodles. So, that will be the end of my report for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just also wanted to report, last week, we had our second RFA citizens meeting, and Stefan, I was wondering maybe under new business, if we could call upon you to give a report out on the RFA. Thank you very much, and then we can answer some of those questions that have been asked frequently and give an update on that. And then also, last week, I attended Fire Station 19's open house, and it was so much fun. There was tons of children there, and there was this little boy learning CPR, and it was just a delight when the person telling him how to do CPR, and they said, what is the first thing you do when you do CPR? And he's looking, and she goes like this, and it just dawned on him. He went like this, he went down on the floor, and he started doing compressions. I was so impressed. I, I don't know what they're teaching in school, but I know a lot of businesses have stopped teaching CPR, which is a big concern, and as you know, Fire District 1 at the time was learning and teaching a new type of CPR, where you don't have to do the certain type of breathing. And so, it would be very interesting how often we get taught CPR at work and at the city. And they said that the CPR has become a business in its own, and I was kind of disappointed in that. And I think everybody should have that opportunity to learn CPR, whether it's at your work or during a volunteer event or something, but it kind of opened my eye up into CPR and how it's changed over the years. So, not only did they do CPR demos, but they did how important it is to prepare for two weeks. And I guess, Mayor, you had asked this, too, unless they said that you had recently asked about how important it was for people to prepare at least for two weeks in case there is a disaster. So, what you have to have, and they said most of it is stuff that you already have at hand, but it might be all over. So, it's important to have a box at home with the water and first aid, and they listed a whole bunch of other things. They had a list, and you can always go to their website and find out what that is. And then they also gave away bike helmets, and I think that's why there were so many excited kids there. So, that was wonderful. They did an awesome job on that. And then Councilman Ryan and I had the Left One meeting where we reviewed claims, and then we also had the Park and Rec meeting, which we discussed the 2023 board plan and a whole bunch of other exciting items. And then, of course, Councilman Wall and I review and sign the expenditures every two weeks. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. On April 6th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board as an alternate. I will let Mayor Protam, I'm sure, share all sorts of goodness. I will highlight, though, a couple of events that, that they talked about. So, one of them is the Passport to 2044 for Elected Officials and Planning Commissioners. That is on May 18th at noon via Zoom, so that is a good opportunity particularly for those who have not been through the comprehensive planning process before, like myself, to, to better understand those processes, and it sounds like there will be something for everyone. So, they encouraged those of us council members and planning commissioners to attend that if we could. And then they are doing something, I think, really neat in terms of kind of thinking about workforce planning and getting young folks excited about planning in particular. So, they are putting on a summer planning academy this summer for high school students who are 16 and older, who can go through, I think it's a 12-week program, and, and learn a little bit more about the, the work that municipal organizations engage in around planning. And so, sent some information over to the College and Career Specialist over at Mount Lake Terrace High School, Trebekah, Brazil. So, if kids in our community are interested in learning a little bit more, they have information there at the high school, or they are welcome to reach out to us, and I'm sure we can get them that information as well, but it would be really neat to see Mount Lake Terrace represented at, at that planning academy over the summer. On the 12th, attended the presentation on the fire annexation via Zoom, appreciated that we did two sessions, one in person and one utilizing technology for accessibility. I thought that was great, and I thought it was a really great presentation, and it sounds, it sounds like we'll have Stefan do it, so I won't give a recap here of all of that good stuff, but I thought it was really helpful and answered good questions from the community about what, to help them better understand what, what the fire annexation vote that we have before us is all about. Was at our work session on the 13th, and then also was at the BW noodle ribbon cutting here on the 15th, and just wanted to say how appreciative I am to, to them for their hospitality and wonderful food, and just, it was a really, I think, great opportunity to come together as a community, and, and really just excited to have them here in our neighborhood, and so I appreciated them welcoming us, and that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start back in March, as I was absent for a Monday meeting due to illness. March 21st, I attended the Arts Commission meeting. Then, on March, let's see here, oh, 14th, I attended the Left One Board, and then, turn the page. Now, 13th was the work study for our city. Now, 15th was the BW Noodle Company ribbon cutting. And then tomorrow, the Arts Commission is canceled due to Wednesday. There'll be in the chambers here, an art presentation of five different artists for artworks to be presented for the light rail station area, and I call it the gateway area, but it's the light rail small park we're putting in there. And, let's see. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, next will be Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quite brief, and I guess I'll start back in, on, on March, having attended the Hadiani Restaurant grand opening as well. On April 7th, I had a chance to sit down with Police Chief Caw and had a good, good chat about, sort of do a meet and greet as, as my first, first chance to, to chat with him as a council member. And then the other non-council meeting that I've, I've attended was the BW Noodle Grand Opening this last Saturday, April 15th. Want to thank you, Mayor, for assigning me to be the alternate on the Seashore Transportation Committee, and also note that I'm looking forward to being a bit more active out here in the, the community and doing regional events now that the, the state legislative session will be ending this, this coming Sunday, so I'll have a bit more bandwidth for that. So, with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, I'm brought, Mayor Protam. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And on, following up on Councilmember Murray's report, I was attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting on April 6th, had a legislative update, reviewed the Kitsap and approved the Kitsap County-wide planning policy certification, reviewed the 2024 Comp Plan Certification Outreach Plan and processes in place. As, as we all know, that's going to be a huge lift for cities across the state, great opportunity to create the vision that we have for our, for our cities. And the Puget Sound Regional Council, as well as the State Department of Commerce, have really created a lot of tools that are available to help us through that process, and particularly the Puget Sound Regional Council has, is going to be doing a lot of outreach, working with our staff particularly. They're certainly happy to come out and talk to the council as well to help walk us through the process, but there's, you know, planning manuals, consistency tools, focus around housing, transportation, and climate equity, displacement path, et cetera. This is all going to be taking place. It's going to be a lot of, a lot of work to do, but it's a lot of exciting opportunities ahead. So, looking forward to that. As Councilmember Murray also pointed out, Passport 2044 is also an opportunity for all of us to hear and learn more about that process. I'll be sitting on the, one of the panels for that. That is on May 18th. Encourage you all to sign up and listen in on that. Again, just a lot of resources that are available, so encourage us to take advantage and utilize those tools that are available. Also, had reported on this previously, but also continue to build excitement around the Regional Council's Youth Engagement Program and getting more youth involved in the planning process and understanding how to take an active role in shaping our communities. On the, later on this, April 6th, and again on April 12th, participated in the Mount Lake Terrace South County Fire Info and Q and A Sessions, so those are great informative tools. I believe, isn't that online, a recording of that on, available online? The, the South County Fire, yeah. So, so hopefully, that is available, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about it later today, but- Okay, well, let's, let's see if we can try and help highlight, point people in the right direction, because that's, that is a great information source. We'll talk, again, we'll talk a little bit more about it today to try and answer questions, but I think that, you know, there, there are, that, that session was available online and a lot of other things, so maybe we can do some more outreach and letting people, pointing people to the right direction to make sure that they are informed voters. I, on the 13th, I participated, didn't participate, I listened in on the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting, just to try and figure out, you know, we've got the Transit Corridor Project Grant that we've received, we're awarded from Puget Sound Regional Council, but is at risk because of delays in the project, and so we're trying to save that. We'll see what we can do, but that was informative to understand that side of the process and where things are at. We'll have another opportunity at the Executive Board meeting coming up. Then we had, later that day, I had the council work session, and then on the 15th, had the ribbon cutting with BW Noodles. Excited to have another Thai restaurant here in town and be able to take advantage of some more great food. So, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, for my report, on the 4th, on the 5th of April, I attended the South County Mayor's Meeting, and I have to say that we have a great group of mayors in South Snohomish County, and that includes Breyer, Mill Creek, Mcoteal, Linwood, Woodway, and, and Mount Lake Terrace. And so, we, we get a lot accomplished, and we share ideas and help each other out. On the 6th and the 12th, I attended the Fire Annexation Q and A, and then on the 7th, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum, and I don't know why, I just like this forum so much. It's at 7:30 in the morning on the first Friday of the month, and I think I've missed only a handful in 15 years, handful of meetings in 15 years, but it, I've learned so much about transportation, and transportation's at all levels, and, and met so many wonderful people who actually puts those transportation things together, like the routes. They actually, you would meet the people who put the routes together. 50 years ago, I probably would not have been at all interested in anything like that, but today, I'm all ears. And on the 12th, in the afternoon, our Congresswoman Susan Delbene was at our library to meet with the AARP people and their tax preparation volunteers, and she invited me to be there, too, because it was in Mount Lake Terrace. And so, I made it and welcomed her back to our city, and she is really a great person that really listens and, and tries to become involved in her district at every level. So, we're lucky to have her. We were lucky to have Rick Larson, but if we had to lose him, we've got a really great replacement. And then on the 15th, I attended the BW Noodle Ribbon Cutting, and I have to say that, yes, we have another Thai restaurant in town, but every Thai restaurant is different, and this one is different from the other one, and then it's different, that's different from these. So, we have three, I think, in, in town, and they're all really different. Pardon? And they're also very, very good, yes. And then, I just wanted to say that I tried to RSVP for the Diamond Knot ESAC thing Wednesday, and the RSVP is already, it's full. But I'm sure that if we showed up, because they said you can pay at the door, so I don't think they'll be turning away the Mount Lake Terrace people in our Mount Lake Terrace Economic Alliance. At least, I hope they're not gonna. So, I'll be there. And then, Councilmember Sonmore handed me this flyer about all the things that Lakewood is going to be doing this, this summer, and I really, really appreciate this, because these are things that I would like to see Mount Lake Terrace do. And so, we're going to be talking a lot more, because, you know, we, we have, I think, one or two things, we have three things all summer long, and Lakewood has a whole list of wonderful things that I would like to see us start looking- And Lakewood has a whole list of wonderful things that I would like to see us start looking into. And that is the end of my report. Next will be, does anyone want to see it? So next will be new business. Does anyone have any new business before we get into the annexation? Oh, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to say that I wanted to attend the Edmunds School District Music Concern Meetings this evening at the high school. In that Edmunds School District, in order to balance their budget, will be cutting many music programs throughout the schools. They're thinking on eliminating choir and by two band programs per high school. It's not determined yet, but there's a lot of people wanting to show up to show support for the music program and/or if you could write a letter to the music director at one of your favorite high schools like Mount Lake Terrace High School, Darren Fall, the band director. And that's who is promoting the support. So I hope we don't lose a lot of music programs. Thank you.
I just want to say that almost every time there's a shortage of money in the school districts, the arts go first. And that's really too bad. And I've seen it my whole life. And it's sad because art is everything around us at all times. And then when I start talking about that, you know, I know that people like to argue with me, like, well, we don't need art. Okay, who designed your clothing? Who designed your, you know, all these designers and everything? So I can go on and on about that, but I'm glad that hopefully we'll have had a lot of people show up there tonight to talk about this. Because I remember when Mark O'Connor was in school, and it would probably be in the book that he just wrote about. But at that time, he was a child prodigy in violin and fiddles and so forth. But our school district did not want to let him off school to go to all of these music events. And they fought it. And so he has very, very bad memories of our city and the school district. And I told him that it's gotten better, and it has. So let's make that true because music is a part of our life. And I'm really tired of hearing people say, well, we don't need music, we don't need the arts. And yet they're probably the first ones over. If a band comes to town, they're probably going to pay $400 for a ticket. They'll be the first ones in line. Yet, it's not important to have music. Right? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would just add quickly that the school board meeting talking about the budget is tomorrow night. So timeliness, if folks are interested in weighing in on things around the school district and the budget, they are having that conversation tomorrow night at their board meeting.
And then do we know if the Mount Lake Terrace High School Jazz Band is one of the bands that's going to be cut?
Don't think so.
Because that's too, that's too important. Anyways, Councilmember Rory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to get on the record that this coming Saturday, April 22nd, is the Earth Day Park Cleanup at Veterans Park. I think I've probably stolen Councilmember Ward's thunder on this, but I just want to make sure that folks know that the, this is again happening on the 22nd here from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And the meeting spot will be here at City Hall for the kickoff and other resources for volunteers who are interested. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, Rory took mine, so I'll make up a new one. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Is the only thing I was going to talk about, and one of the reasons I brought the event schedule from another city down, is they are having a July 4th event. And instead of using fireworks, one of the big things now is using drones. And so I'm hoping that our city can start looking into using drones instead of actual fireworks. I know the cost is up there as well, but it's also safer for the environment. And they can do some wonderfully awesome things with that. But I think we had one more item that we were going to talk about with the RFA.
I just wanted to say one thing before we go to the RFA. The Linwood Parking Garage opened today. And I just think that that, I don't know if it was supposed to open this much earlier than Light Rail, but ours opened how many years before? And so I just, I just think that it's wonderful that we have another parking garage near us, and it's open, and hopefully people will use it. I know people will use it. Okay. So do we want to move on? Does anyone have anything else? Okay. So did, Len, did you want Stefan to explain what?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. First, I'd like to thank Mr. French for attending tonight's meeting and trying to learn as much as possible before he cast his votes on the potential annexation into South County Fire. As someone who's worked on this issue, I really appreciate it when someone is trying to get as much information as they can to help them make a decision. I heard a comment about this being posted, the April 12th open house being posted, and it might not be, I did check, it is posted. It's on YouTube. You can also find the link via the city's webpage. We do have a webpage dedicated exclusively to the fire annexation. And on that webpage, we've got links to frequently asked questions. There's a number, about 15 questions that we answer, that if you go to that webpage, you'll find out a lot of information. We also have news releases, all the ones that we've issued on the annexation itself. We've got those posted there. And then also, we have links to all of the city council meetings where I gave a presentation. And there were about five or six in the months of January and February, up until the point the council made a recommendation or actually a request to put this on the ballot for April 25th. So there is all that information on the webpage. And so we ask people to go to that webpage if they have any questions about that. If I recall Mr. French's question correctly, he's asking about, there's numbers referenced in the materials, $1.74 million. There is a number referenced that of $1.694 million and other numbers referenced as well. So I'll just kind of start from the very beginning where 18 years ago, the city council and South County Fire entered into, entered a local agreement for South County Fire to provide fire and emergency medical services to the city and its residents. So that was in 2005. That 20-year agreement expires at the end of 2024. So when that contract expires, what that means is if the voters do not say yes to annexing into South County Fire, then the city has to enter into a contract with South County Fire. They have to renew the contract. The issue here is we're at a crossroads because the city will not be paying the great rates that it's paying today for the same service. I'll give you an example. In 2023, we are paying about $3.7 million for fire and EMS service. If we were annexed into South County Fire, we would be paying, the city would be paying three more, $3 million more dollars for the same contract. The reason for that is South County Fire must charge all those who are served by that entity the same rate. So the cost to the city, the cost to the residents, is going up at the end of 2024. That's a fact. And so what that means is if the city has to pay $3 million additional dollars to fund the contract, that means that the city has $3 million less in general fund money to pay for services such as parks and rec, police services, city operations, et cetera. So the city council looked at a lot of different options to continue providing fire service. It looked at the city creating its own fire department. That is the most expensive option and just cost prohibitive. We also looked at joining other cities to possibly provide fire service. But Linwood is now a part of South County Fire. Mill Creek voted in 2022 by a yes vote of 75%. And so those two cities, they're out of the picture. Edmunds has a contract with South County Fire that doesn't expire until 2030. So there's no ability to do that either because they're not going to enter into a new contract and throw away the good rates they are currently paying today. So that's not going to happen as well. Shoreline, they communicate primarily with King County Emergency Services, so it doesn't make sense to partner with them because we communicate primarily with Snohomish County Emergency Services. So the city also looked at South County Fire and bringing a vote to the public and seeing if the citizens want to vote yes to annex into South County Fire. The numbers that Mr. French was referring to is there are a few funding sources that are paid, used to pay the current contract. The $1.74, $1.74 million is how much is paid from the general property taxes. Our current contract is $3.771 million. And so the general property tax amount used to pay towards that contract is 174. The emergency medical services levy brings in about $3.5 million. And, or I'm sorry, $350,000. And so what happens if we annex is the city will no longer be assessing the EMS levy. Instead, it'll be South County Fire. The city also uses transport fees. Right now, the transport fees are being generated when South County Fire transports someone for emergency medical services. And so they, the customer pays that. And what happens then is it goes to the city, but then we turn around and give it to South County Fire. What will happen instead is the funds will go directly to South County Fire, so the city will no longer be an intermediary. So that discontinues. So the only revenue source that the city council has some discretion on is that $1.74 million of general property taxes. And so the city council decided on February 21st that they will no longer collect $1.64 million from that $1.74 million amount if the voters say yes. And so that just means adjusting the rate per thousand so that you are bringing in, the city is bringing in $1.64 million or, yeah, $1 million less. What's that? 1.6, yeah, sorry, 1.694. Yeah. And so what that means is there'll be $50,000, there's a $50,000 difference, and the council has decided to take that $50,000 and use it to help low-income households pay their utility bills. And so that's why you have a difference in those amounts. If we were part of South County Fire today, if we were annexed in today, the property owner who has a 2,000-square-foot house, about $619,000 of assessed valuation, which is the average today, they would have to pay $764 a year by giving back that $1.694 million. What that does is reduce the impact to a property owner with the same square footage and the same assessed valuation. So instead of $764,000, or $764 a year, the resident for that size home and assessed valuation would pay $395 a year or $33 a month. So I hope that provides some clarification. There's additional information on the website as well.
And I'm trying to read your mind for a minute, Len. Is, Stefan, can we ask what services that we're getting for this fee and how much? And there's one other thing, Len, I think you might be interested in too, is we could have been charging our citizens more and we decided not to. Stefan, do you mind talking about the, what we're getting for the RFA and how it's beneficial to our city because we can't afford to have our own fire department? And how we are doing what we can where we could have asked our citizens to pay more? And we figured out to help balance our budget in the next six years, we would have had seven or six million dollars extra. But we decided that citizens are paying quite a bit of money for a lot of different things. And so we've asked them just to pay the minimum of what we could to go into the fire district.
Can I just bring it down to the Neanderthal level, which is where most people that I talked to were thinking, is I paid this amount now, it's $3.9 million. How much is it going to be when all this gets worked out? Numbers go up, numbers go down. What's the total cost of our fire service going to be? It's 3.9 right now, I just said that. What will it be next year? It's not in the 24 or 35.
Can someone restate the question because that was not on the microphone?
He's asking how much it's going to cost total in 2024 versus 2023. Right now, we're not able to calculate that because we don't have all the numbers from Snohomish County Assessor. But what we can do is talk about what it would cost in 2023 if we were annexed into the fire district today. So right now, we're paying $3.771 million towards the South County Fire contract. If we were paying for that service under a new contract, it would cost $3 million additional dollars today for a total of about $6.7 million. So that would be $2023. And that's.
Is that a good proxy for 24?
Yeah, I would say probably yes. Yeah.
So where are your responses going up at 75%?
We need to have this like either on a microphone or something so we can capture all this. So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I don't understand. The long and the short of it, it's a huge increase. And I've heard a lot of people say that there's been a lot of conversation in to get it out to the community. I haven't heard anybody in the community. I've talked to a lot of folks, including one of his father, and nobody has any clue about this stuff. And it's the biggest tax increase I can remember in the 45 years or 50 years now that I've worked.
I can tell you that we've issued a number of press releases. Teresa Whipple is here tonight from Miami's News. We have posted articles. We have posted it to the front of the city's website. We have a webpage dedicated to this. We have issued postcards, which have gone to all the residents in the city. So we've done as much as we possibly can. We also hosted an open house, in-person open house in the council chambers on April 6th. We hosted an open house via Zoom for those who weren't able to attend the open house in person, and that took place on April 12th. And so we made a concerted effort to get the information out to the public as much as possible.
Thank you. I got one I need.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, and thank you. And first of all, let's be clear that the city cannot advocate for or against the ballot measure, right? I mean, we're just trying to provide information. And so I appreciate you coming forward and asking those questions because it is important for us to make sure that we're getting as much information out to our voters as possible to make sure that.
You're making too much.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is. Yeah, yeah, it is, it is a challenge.
But if you don't get it, you don't, you don't have money.
Agreed, agreed. And, and so that's, yeah, that's, every opportunity we have to be able to help inform our voters is appreciated. And it is a challenge since we aren't able to advocate or campaign on behalf of this. All we can do is provide information. I do want to point out that, as Stephen mentioned, so if you go to our, and recognizing also that not everybody has internet access. But there is a lot of great information available on our website. So if you go to our homepage and down, down at the, under City Happenings, there is a link to fire annexation on the ballot. So click on that. And then you have all those frequently asked, asked questions available, a lot of information about the annexation information, the links to the meetings that we had, as Stephen points out, there's been several meetings that the council has had to inform us on why this is before us and why we wanted to make sure that our voters had the opportunity to make the decision. As, and there's also links to the information sessions for the, for the video recording of that. And bottom line is, you know, we had a great contract 20 years ago. And 20 years later, the costs have, we, we had that contract in place. 20 years later, those costs have increased substantially. And we aren't able to renew at that same rate. And so now, yes, cost of providing fire services has more than doubled in the last 20 years. And so now we have a decision to make. Either we continue trying, and another thing that Stephen has pointed out in a lot of those meetings is the fire district is not going to give us another 20-year contract either. I mean, they're looking at short-term contracts and short-term expensive contracts because they don't want to continue doing the contract service. They want to have us annexed in. So this, this is where the decision for our voters is to, one way or another, we're going to end up having to pay more, more than double, whether it's through continued contracts, short-term contracts that are going to cost a lot of money, or going directly to being, annexing into the fire district itself. By annexing into the fire district itself, it also gives our voters an opportunity to vote on who is representing us on the fire district and be able to have kind of that taxation with representation, right? We're actually able to voice, our citizens will be able to voice their concerns and, and have a, have a vote in, in district matters. Whereas now, we're on a contract and we're just kind of on the sidelines, you know.
I think we're in a council member corner and happening when you can write it, because the context you just gave is far more informative than anything else I've heard. It's doubled, it's gone up, and we have no other choice. It's really all there is to it.
Yeah, it's a tough position to be in, but that's where we are.
And it doesn't say it in the budget change. All it is is numbers. Give me some context, and then I'm got a vote.
Yeah.
I have no choice if I want a fire district.
Right. Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sam Moore?
And that's good insight, too, because a lot of what we're hearing is we have to use this proper language on how to get it out to our citizens. And I wanted to point out, too, that our council in our city was leading the way, I think it was 2009, 10, and 11, where even Mayor Smith at the time was the chair of the left one, or left one, of the RFA. And we tried so hard to get the other cities on board to join an RFA. So we worked for two years on trying to get all these other cities to join an RFA. Muko Teal couldn't at the time because they were still in their contract. We tried to get Bothell in. Muko Teal had another contract, but we were, Linwood, Breyer, Linwood was our holdout at that time. We had Breyer on board. And then all of a sudden, at the last minute, people started pulling out. And we were so disappointed because we could have gone into this RFA together. And then Linwood went ahead and did the RFA without any of the other cities. And so where we're at now is just, is just a progression of where we needed to be a few years ago. But we're at the point where we have to join this RFA. We have to put it out to citizens to give them the opportunity to vote for it, which I kind of feel is unfair because if they don't know, but if they don't vote yes, oh, I'm not telling you how to vote. So, but I want to take that back up. They can vote, you can vote however you want, but getting the right information, I'm afraid that our city won't have that $3 million extra. And other services will be cut. And legislative bills have been coming across about how we can increase property taxes. And that's not a big agenda of mine at this time to increase property taxes. So I'm hoping voters are looking at what they need to do for the fire district. And I'm not telling you how to vote. I'm just trying to get some information out there. But Councilman Wall, you did a great job explaining it.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Protem.
I just, I do want to add, and again, appreciate the opportunity to, to explain. It is going to be an increase in, in cost, whether it's directly through the city or to the fire district itself. But we, as the council, did try to reduce the burden as much as possible while leaving $50,000 available to be able to help our citizens be able to pay for utilities, services, and, you know, like the, the transport fees and things like that. But for the most part, we are trying, we, we felt it was very important to reduce the impact on our taxpayers as much as possible.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first apologize to the city clerk who's clearly said, "Go to the microphone," and it's just not happening. But it is what it is. That said, I'm going to raise mine as a rhetorical for now, but I sincerely would love to hear your answer at another time, unless you want to go to the microphone, however that works. Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I'm like, I can get another way. Which is just to say, switching gears a little bit, I think you have a valid point to say, you know, I didn't hear about this. But I did want to back up and say, in my almost five years now with the council, the way we get information out is light and night and day in terms of better, but clearly not as effective as we're still trying. We actually have positions now that are dedicated to getting information out, which is a long way around the horn to say, it'd be wonderful to learn, not just how you learned about it now, but what are some spaces that we're missing. Because I, as you just pointed, I see you everywhere. And so it's interesting to think that someone who literally is walking the city and engaging in the city is now saying, wait a minute, I'm just learning about this, when we feel like we have been as close to, as transparent as any possibly you can. I mean, some of this was in subcommittee. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. So, so like I said, it'd be, I think it'd be in our interest to hear other ideas, especially again, as we're now having folks on staff who are going to be dedicated to making sure our city and our residents are informed. So. I guess the irony is he feels like he's been doing that a long time, though. So that's why I would say, but you're only here today to hear it. So I'm talking about how do we get that into spaces in the future, just to make sure, you know, because again, I, I would argue with all of the evidence in front of us of where the information is available, common denominator is online. We do have to admit that, or at least acknowledge that. But I literally just archived as a historical document in my home, the postcard. So I know the postcard went to everyone. It was pretty straightforward. So, yeah, so we just sent the postcard out about the, what, what we're talking about now. So, so that's good to know. That's good feedback. So nonetheless, just kind of pointing out that I don't want to dismiss that you've touched upon something that we are trying to get as much information out there. And somebody, again, who I would argue is very well-informed is saying, I didn't hear it. I mean, literally, editor, do we call you Editor Whipple? I don't know. Actually, I just call you Teresa. Nonetheless, I know you've been covering it very well and putting it in different spaces. But at the end of the day, if folks don't know about it, tree fell in the forest, who was around? So.
Well, I think for print media, it was the Mailer and City Happenings. And the rest were, were online. So what more can we do? We have to think about it. All right. Anyone else have anything else for new business? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
If we are sufficiently wrapped up on that topic, I, this is going to be my last opportunity to say thank you to Stephen. And so I want to make sure the world knows how much we truly appreciated everything that you did for us from the beginning. I mean, you, you've, you've carried the water, the, you've carried us across the finish line on a number of key projects. And you stepped up when we needed you to step up to do even more as, as the acting city manager. And so for the past, what is it, almost a year now? You, you've, you've really, really had an impact and really made a huge difference in this city in, in helping us keep moving forward at a time that we were, we were struggling in a lot of ways, a lot of areas. I mean, coming out of COVID, a lot, lost a lot of staff in a lot of areas and a lot of, a lot of change. And you held it all together. And we truly appreciate everything that you did for us. And so again, thank you. We will miss you terribly. But you will always be remembered for the amazing things that you did for us over the last number of years, but particularly in the last year that you really stepped up and made a difference. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And Stephen, I'll, I'll just echo Brian's thanks and appreciation. And I'll, I'll just share a quick story about, you know, the memory I still have from the, you know, vague. But, you know, the first time we met, you were working at, at Snohomish County. And I was a young legislative staffer. And, you know, it's, it's great to sort of knowing you here and there over the years, but really gotten a chance to appreciate, you know, how, you know, quiet staff leaders really keep the trains running on time in small governments like ours. And, you know, I don't think it's an understatement to say that, that we, we might owe you for even being in this room right now. I'm not sure this building would have been built without you. And, you know, your, your legacy here will, will bear fruit for, for years to come. So I hope you enjoy your retirement. And, you know, the appreciation is, the city owes you is probably beyond words. But best of luck, and thank you.
I thought I had another meeting with you.
Brian got it started.
All right. So I, if anyone else has anything, anything to add? All right. Okay. So if, if everyone is done, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.